Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, April 12th, meeting of the Board of Education for Monroe Woodbury. All rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Approval of the revised agenda, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Questions or comments from interested citizens? We have three speakers tonight. First up is Mr. Jacob Ciriello.
Good evening. My name is Jacob Ciriello. Tonight, I'm here with many of my fellow students to ask for approval to increase the number of main stage productions the MWHS Drama Club can perform in a year. According to the New York State Theater Education Association, the average number of main stage productions done per year in a school of our size is three to four. Monroe Woodbury, a school that has received national recognition as best community for a music education for 11 consecutive years, only does one play and one musical. We have asked Mrs. Pact on numerous occasions about doing more productions. She has advised that she has made this request to administration more than five times over the last three years, but has been unable to obtain approval. Because of our passion and dedication to the arts and our craft, we decided to present this request not only to administration, but to the Board of Ed. We wanted both groups to fully understand that while Ms. Pact has been formally making this request, it is for us, her students, who want nothing more than opportunities to perform. What are the benefits of increasing the numbers of productions? It will increase the students' opportunities to participate and connect with the school and the community. Students who have conflicts during our current spring musical season, December through March, would now be able to participate. Case in point, for years, Josh Gorlin was forced to make a choice between theater and baseball. And trust me, he struggled with that because he loved both. This year, he ultimately made the decision to commit to theater. But if there were multiple main stage productions, he could actually do both theater and baseball. This situation is not unique, and we know numerous students in this situation who it applies to. Increasing the number of productions per year would reach more students and make the drama club more inclusive and enable us to perform a variety of different theatrical genres for our community. It will also enable more MW students to be set up for success. Theater teaches crucial life skills like time management, public speaking, leadership, collaboration, stress management, and adaptability, which will set students up to be successful after graduation. It provides experience working in an environment with professional standards, helps build self-esteem, and communication skills and confidence. It will benefit our community and fulfill their wishes for more. Monroe Woodbury High School shows are highly respected among community members. Our recent production of Les Misérables was a huge success and received countless rave reviews on social media and around the county. To quote a parent from a neighboring school district, "We should have sent our kids to Monroe. Our community wants more." And we want nothing more than to provide them with the high-quality productions that we offer, a gateway to new worlds of experience, emotion, cultural enrichment, and greater social awareness within a close proximity of their home. Finally, it will provide equity to our MW students. Because our school only allows one large-scale production per year, students who are financially able to pay to play can get more opportunities than those who cannot. Tuition for private productions range from $800 to $1,500 per production. This gives students who can participate a big advantage on their resumes, as well as their college and scholarship applications. However, that can change with your help. Adding more shows could double or even triple the amount of productions a student can list on their resume and help them to be ultimately more successful in life. Many of you up here saw Les Mis. You saw and heard what we can do. We believe that MW students deserve more opportunities to grow their talents through productions and be able to share with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Tyler Landuski.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Landuski, and theater is my sport. Tonight, I am here with my fellow students to propose the establishment of the MWHS Drama Club and to gain an actual budget for the club similar to that of a sport. Yes, we proudly say we belong to the high school's drama club, but did you know it's not an existing club? And it does not receive an annual budget from the Monroe Woodbury School District? Since over the last month, the Board of Education meetings have included discussions regarding the upcoming 2023-24 budget, we thought tonight would be a great opportunity to explain why our club should be funded by the school district. Every production requires things entirely different than the last. We need new costumes, props, and sets every single time we put on a new show. Rights and royalties cost thousands. Take Les Mis, $5,500 alone. In addition, our technical equipment has not been upgraded by the school district in over 20 years. This year, funds from ticket sales were used to start upgrading some of the equipment in order to assist us in producing Broadway-quality productions. We spent $8,500 to upgrade some of the sound and lighting equipment. Keeping in mind, we bought used lighting because of budget constraints. Additional technical equipment still needs to be upgraded at a tune of tens of thousands of dollars. While we do sell tickets, this year, we netted a loss for our Les Mis production of $1,100 due to the cost of the technical upgrades. Tonight, we are asking the Board of Education and the Monroe Woodbury administrators to consider theater a varsity sport and to supply it with a budget. Many aspects of theater are equivalent to those of team sports. Theater, like sports, teaches the importance of preparation, determination, and competitiveness. Both sports and theater require intense physical and mental training. We stretch and move, push ourselves, and build up stamina and strength. Like a traditional sports team, we both require dedication and discipline to be successful. When it comes to team building, there's nothing like theater. It makes a group of people come together to unite over one goal, and for that is to perform the best production for our community. In last year's 2023 budget, over $1.6 million was budgeted to account 2855 interscholastic athletics, which includes funding for sports such as football, softball, tennis, golf, bowling, just to name a few. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the $7.4 million upgrade to our athletic fields in 2019. When was the last time our school district considered making a substantial investment or upgrade to the music and arts departments? Maybe it's our turn. This school year, the Monroe Woodbury High School Drama Club had two main stage shows, a small cabaret and a murder mystery show, several workshops from industry professionals, and the premiere trip to the NICED conference. Our last production alone included 105 cast, crew, AV, and set design students who put in hundreds of hours to make something great on the Monroe Woodbury High School stage. We point this out to show you how many students our club impacts all throughout the school year. Tonight, we respectfully ask for your consideration in implementing the Monroe Woodbury High School Drama Club and to give it the same consideration you would any other varsity sport, and to provide it with a budget so we can bring quality productions to the Monroe Woodbury High School and our community, and receive professional training and education in the theater arts. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker we have is Mr. Matthew Raymond Lo.
Good evening, Board of Ed members. My name is Matthew Raymond Lo, Monroe Woodbury High School sophomore, and I went to the BOSI's visitation earlier this year. I was happy to learn that the fire science program was offered as a junior and a senior course because that is what I'm interested in doing with my life. But later, I was told that I could only do fire science as a senior, but no one could give me a reason why. My parents and I found out that other juniors in Orange County has went to this fire science program. But due to MW's rule of only allowing juniors to go to BOSI's in the afternoon, since fire science is a program that's only offered in the morning, it all comes down to scheduling. I feel like this is very unfair because if I was in another school system, this would not be an issue. I know that you might be thinking, "He could just wait until senior year to go." But this is the reason why that matters so much to me, to be allowed to go next year. I've wanted to be a firefighter my whole life, and it's even in my IEP goals to work on becoming one. This school has been extremely difficult for me to get through with my learning disabilities, and I've had to struggle and pass lots of obstacles that I cannot control. Now, this is a new obstacle out of my control, too, but I'm hoping it can be changed. Going to BOSI's for the fire science program as a junior is crucial because this community needs firefighters. I'm trying to follow in my dad and my grandfather's footsteps by volunteering in the Monroe Fire District. I know that there's a lot of fire calls that are happening that are being understaffed and have to be called to mutual aid. If I could take the BOSI's program as a junior, I would be qualified to serve as an interior fireman during my senior year. But waiting until senior year to do the fire program would mean that I wouldn't be qualified until I graduate and I'm ready to leave town. This has been a problem for Monroe Fire District for a while now, leaving this community understaffed and not giving local students a chance to help. I want to help out my community, and the best way of doing this is to go to the fire science program as a junior. I would continue to try my best at school and complete all requirements before the end of my senior year, but I'd need this high school to be flexible with scheduling. I don't think this is too much to ask. I hope you will agree that scheduling rule is not more important than helping a student reach his life goals. Please help me give this opportunity to help out my community sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all our speakers for this evening. Questions or comments from interested citizens from the last meeting we had done? Next up is the Budget Review. The Superintendent.
Good evening. Every year, we look to refine the budget process in our presentations to the school board and community. It is important for our school community to have a clear understanding of what our goals and how the budget is going to support the district in attaining those goals. I want to take a moment to thank everyone who contributed to the development of this year's superintendent budget presentation. It takes a lot of work and collaboration in developing a budget that supports the needs of the students and staff with consideration to the taxpayers. I also want to thank the Board of Education for their support on the work we do. You've heard throughout the presentations, every administrator that has presented has talked about budget priorities. So today, I'm going to sum up what the budget priorities are for the entire district. Number one is safety and security. We have taken a multi-pronged approach to safety and security. We have a safety audit, a district-wide safety audit. We have radios to ensure that we can communicate in case of an emergency. We've constructed some security vestibules. There are procedures in place such as credential exchange for visitors in the building. We have drills, we have preparation, we have school resource officers and safety officers in every building. And so that is our commitment to safety and security because that's always been and continues to be our number-one priority. This past December, when the voters did not approve our capital project in December, we then administered a survey. The feedback was clear. The cost of the proposition was too high, and they recommended that we do smaller projects and include them in our general budget. So today, you're going to see something new to our budget, something called transfer to capital. This is a mechanism that allows us to fund a capital project and bus purchases rather than having a separate proposition. This includes the purchase of five buses and the construction of a security vestibule at Central Valley for the cost of $1,150,000. The second is to remain responsive to the changing needs of our students. Post-pandemic, the needs of our students have changed. This year, we administered a survey to our students to gather feedback. Based on that feedback, we developed new course offerings or added additional sections when appropriate. This year, we're offering an additional section of scientific research, an additional section of music production, and in addition, we're offering a new course on cybersecurity. It is important that our course offerings prepare our students for jobs not only for today, but for future years. Maintaining our instructional staff. Throughout the year, we have ongoing evaluation of our students' needs and interests. We intentionally place our staff where they offer the most support for our students. And finally, staff and professional development. We know that one of the most important resources we can provide our teachers is good professional development. The goal of professional development for educators is to go beyond maintenance and create sustainable professional longevity so that we ultimately will improve student outcomes. Let's go to Slide 3. You've seen this slide before. It's the 2% tax cap, and it's the formula that we use. As you can see, we start with the prior year's tax levy, which is $129,74,842. We then multiply it by the tax-based growth factor, and then that gives us $130,391,405. Then we add the prior-year pilots, which is $407,787. And then we subtract our prior-year exemptions or our capital levy, which was $881,070. And then we adjust, and we get to $129,998,122. And then we allow for that allowable growth factor, and in this case, it was 1.2. And then we subtract, I said it was a very long formula. We subtract our coming-year pilots, and this year, it's $567,615. And that gives us a tax levy limit of $132,30,000, I apologize, $132,470. So, and then we add this coming-year exceptions, and it's $673,788, to give us a maximum allowable levy of $132,704, I apologize, $132,704,258. So that's a change from the prior year of $3,629,416 to give us an allowable tax levy increase of 2.81. What we are recommending this year is a proposed levy to remain the same as last year. So our proposed tax levy for this year is $129,74,842 for a proposed tax levy increase of zero. Last year, our tax levy limit was 2.77, and we recommended a 1.95. So let's go to the next slide. So what you see here is our state aid. It's really important to note that this year's state aid was an increase of 21.8%. And the only reason that we are able to go with or recommend a 0% tax levy increase is because of the increase in foundation aid. And we felt that it was significant enough to be able to give back to our taxpayers by recommending a 0% tax levy increase. Let's go to the next slide. And so here are two pie charts just to give comparisons. One of the things that you'll note of significance is that the state aid that we received from last year to this year is significant. Last year, the state aid was made up of 33%, and this coming year, it's 38%. The school tax levy, what we tax, what we receive on the property taxes from our community last year made up 64%. This year, it makes up 61%. So that's a significant change for us and an important change for us. And Patrick has done a really good job of talking about the foundation aid that we should have received over the last 10 years. I think many of you who've been around have heard him talk about, "If we got the foundation aid that we are entitled to, we would be in a much better place." Well, this is the third year of a three-year phase-in of the foundation aid, and so this is significant for us. And you can see that the impact is really important to us and our taxpayers. Let's go to our next. So here is my recommendation. There is only one proposition this year. It's Proposition Number 1, and it's for the total general fund budget. We are proposing a total general fund budget of $213,115,925. Again, going back to last year's tax levy of $129,74,842. Total non-property tax revenues and other sources is $83,791,83. This year, we are not putting into taking from our appropriated reserves and our appropriated fund balance of $250,000, giving us a proposed budget of $213,115,925. So as a former social studies teacher, I love to look at history. So what you're looking at is seven years of budget-to-budget comparison. Significantly is the last two years. Last year, our increase was 6.76%. And yes, that was significant, but that is also in correlation to inflation. The costs of things are very expensive, transportation is expensive. And so you saw that last year, you see that again this year. But I do want to make sure that everyone realizes that even with a 5.75% increase, we have had a modest budget. We are presenting a modest budget. So please, go to the next slide. And then this is, we have 19 years of tax levy comparison. We were as high at one point in 2004, 2005 of almost 7%. And then this year, our recommendation is the lowest in 19 years. I believe it's the lowest ever. I don't believe that we've ever had anyone recommend a 0% levy tax increase. So that's important for people to see that we have really maintained ourselves under the tax limit over the last several years, but this year is significant. Again, I want to impress upon everyone that this is a result of the increase in foundation aid that we received. So let's talk about a contingent budget. And hopefully, we don't have to go to this. But a contingent budget is after the voters have declined the, have voted down the proposition that we are putting forward two times. The first time is May 16th, so it's important that everybody go out and exercise their right to vote. And the first thing that we would have to do is that we would have to lower our levy to last year's levy. Well, we've already done that. So what does that mean for us? So in this case, it would mean that we would have to, any kind of mandatory budget reductions such as no raises for non-bargaining staff, costs associated with community use. So the use of our fields would become, we would not be able to do, or equipment. Any, all what we consider non-contingent or non-essential items would be up not to be used this coming year. And I think of significance as well is the fact that we would not be able to purchase our five school buses and our Central Valley security vestibule would not, we would not be able to do that. So some upcoming dates. April 2nd is, this is today, this is my budget recommendation, and the board is asked to adopt the budget today. April 13th is when we have to put in our property tax report card to the New York State Department of Education. May 3rd is a public budget hearing, and I think people might say, "Well, why are you having a public hearing after you've already approved the budget?" These dates are provided to us by the New York State Department of Education. They're the ones that give us these dates. And then May 5th is when our budget mailer will go out. May 16th, I'm going to repeat that again, is an important day. It's the day that you go out to vote on Proposition 1 and also members who are running for the Board of Education. So it's really important that people go out and vote. And I just want to remind everyone that that is taking place at Central Valley Elementary School. This past year, we did have a budget vote here, and we heard from our constituents that this did not really work well, so we've gone back to Central Valley. Another piece that you should know is that this year, we've decided to do a superintendent conference day because I want to go back to safety and security. We are not comfortable with putting our children, having people go into Central Valley while our children are there. So we are having a superintendent conference day. And then I mentioned in the previous, under the contingency budget, that if we had, if the budget went down, we'd have a second opportunity, and that would be June 2nd. I'm sorry, June 20th, yes, thank you. Let's go to the next slide. Any questions? Yes.
So I know New York State has some wacky thing. Does this year's 0% levy increase have any effect on what we can do coming for next year?
Yes.
How so?
Well...
It could.
It could. If you notice, the formula begins with the prior-year levy. So that's really the impact, that you're, we're not advancing the base, if you will, which is the base levy amount. So it does have an impact, but as Elsie alluded to, based on, you know, the state aid increase that we've gotten, the additional federal money that we've gotten, although 5.75 budget-to-budget increase seems high, you know, we've tried to constrain that as much as possible. There's a lot of things that are outside of our control. You alluded to the transportation, you know, other things. So, you know, with all that said, we felt like it still was doable. It was a prudent thing to do, and if there's any year to do it, this would be it.
And we're funding things through reserves, reserve funds, the bus purchase and so forth?
That's the budget transfer? Are you referring to? Let's go back to that. Can we just go back to that for a second? I said that's a new item that we have. So what would happen is if the budget passed, we would then take the funds and we'd transfer it to capital to be able to purchase those things.
It comes through the approved budget?
Correct.
So instead of going into it, it's basically coming out?
Correct.
All right. Final question for you. Foundation aid as we go towards the future. Is this now locked in, guaranteed, that will be fully funded by New York State going forward?
That's what you're saying.
Or can things in Albany change depending on the economy, depending on the state of the state, et cetera?
Well, we don't have the requisite crystal ball right now to make that determination. But my understanding is that the state has, you know, had projections, conservative projections about their budget and that they feel that they can afford this into the future and as a permanent change. It was, as we said, it was always the intent to implement this. There was the Great Recession, which was, you know, huge, right, of 2008, 2009. You know, so it took 10 years for the national economy to recover fully from that. And I think that's why they put foundation aid on pause. But everything I hear, everything I read, and we've kind of discussed this at earlier points in time, they can afford it and, you know, and it will be permanent.
All right. Thank you.
So the amount of foundation aid, does that change from year to year, or it's a set amount?
It can change from year to year based on the formula. And the formula takes into account enrollment, takes into account student need,
Right.
the district demographics, you know, we talked a little bit about that.
Because the way I'm thinking about it is, they are covering the rate of inflation and they're covering the increase in expenses. But eventually, once the budget starts increasing, the amount of foundation aid that is pretty much set is going to be insufficient to cover the budget. So what happens then is after four, five years, you're going back, and your original formula with 0% increase in taxes will not allow you an increase large enough to compensate for the occurring inflation over three, four, five years. And what do we do then?
Well, I think there's a couple of things buried in there. So we're experiencing a relatively, a two-year, relatively large budget-to-budget increase, largely driven by inflation, driven by some other factors. Hopefully, and presumably, that eventually will, that inflation will dissipate and we'll get back to a period of lower inflation that we've enjoyed for 10 or 12 years. That would then, we wouldn't have the pressure on the revenue side of the budget to increase the levy, to get more state aid. And I think at that point, there would be, let's say, more, it wouldn't be the large increase that we've had for the last three years in foundation. It would be more moderate increases, but increases nonetheless. And then we would drop back to the ordinary, typical kind of increase in the tax levy somewhere.
Gradual increase.
Two to 3%, which is the typical...
Nobody wants a 5% increase later on.
Right, and it's not typical.
And the community says absolutely not.
But that would be aligned with the increase in the budget, which would be aligned with an increase in state aid.
If you take a look, if you can go back to that slide, because I think it's a really important slide to look at, where you see the slide where we show budget-to-budget comparison. That's not typical. You can see over the last five years, it was anywhere as high as 3.87, and then it went to 2.59, and then it went up to 6.76. So that's not typical. What you're seeing is, and that's why it was important for me to say that this is really due to a... really due to inflation. So we don't plan on having this kind of an increase. We don't plan on.
We don't know.
Well, we don't, right, everything is...
The reality is, we don't know.
But, but you, but, but when you're making, when you're making a, when you're, when you're thinking about the future, you have to take a look at what's happened in the past, right? So that's not been a typical thing for us.
Can you talk about the, the capital project a little bit? That's a question that I've got, and as far as, you know, we gave a presentation about the projects that were going to be part of the capital project. So what is the, the status of those projects now moving forward? And is there going to be another capital project that's going to be put to the voters at some point?
So, so there is. I think you, part of what, why we did what we did, transferred the capital, was because we took back the community's feedback. So we are going back to look at this project, obviously, cut things out, and really get back to what we think our community can afford. And so, yes, there is a plan to go back to, I think our first priority was really to get through this budget cycle, and then go back to the table that, that has already started, to go back to see what are the things that we should keep in the project, and then go back to the voters.
And I think one of the things that we also talked about was making it a two-phase project. So Phase One could happen as early as the fall of 2023, and we would make that a, I don't know, much smaller number than a hundred and fifteen million than we originally proposed. That would be Phase One. And then Phase Two would come, you know, at some point in the future thereafter, because the needs are still there, and as we talked about, a lot of the needs were...
Basic.
Yeah, basic things, that, they're not getting better.
Right.
And we're spending a lot of money still on, you know, repairs and, and maintenance of old systems, so.
But by that, you mean that there'll be another vote in the fall of 2023?
That would be the, the plan, yes. I mean, obviously, with the board's input and support.
Do we have a slightly wider graph going back to, let's say, two thousand seven, two thousand eight? Does it correlate with the economy?
For the budget, budget-to-budget increases?
With budget increases.
We, we have that data, you know, we could share that. We, I don't have it, you know, immediately available. We do have that. Like an overlay of the budget increase versus CPI changes?
Yeah, yeah. Because it seems like there's a decline from eighteen, but where is the graph prior to seventeen, sixteen, fifteen? And does it correlate with the, with what's happening with the economy? And if we can actually predict what's going to happen?
Yeah.
We can predict with as much clarity that we have from the past, right?
Right.
It, I mean, it's difficult, because, you know, the budget, budget-to-budget increase is driven by CPI, but there's other factors as well, right, that we talk about, so.
So just for, I think for the public to understand, is there a difference between what's been referred to all along as state aid to foundation aid? Because that was, those terms have been kind of thrown around since.
Changed.
Yeah.
You want to take it?
Yes, I will. So, foundation aid is a subset of state aid. State aid is a more generic term, which is encompassing a many aid programs. And foundation aid is the more specific, formula-driven aid program that it makes up the majority of our state aid, you know, but state aid is just a generic term. So it's, you're right, we shouldn't use it interchangeably. It's not exactly, it's not the same, you know, but, but state aid is broader, right? It's all things sort of coming from the state. There's some federal aid, too, that goes to the special aid fund, and then foundation aid is a specific, general form of state aid. And the other ones would be the expenditure-based aids that we've talked about, and aid for, you know, special need students, and special education expenses, and, you know, all sorts of things.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions?
Just a quick one. If we do go forward with this, are we at risk of losing anything that we currently...
Say that again, I couldn't hear you.
We're at risk of losing anything that we currently have?
No.
Services?
No.
Staff?
No.
That's what I, that's what I want to hear.
And I think that's why I said, maintain, you know, the programs that we have, maintain the staff that we have. No, absolutely not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, approval of the March twenty-ninth minutes.
We adopt you.
Motion?
Oh, wait, I'm skipping the budget.
No.
Next up is six point two, adoption of the proposed budget for the 2023, 2024 property tax report.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is approval of the minutes, March twenty-ninth. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy manual, second reading and adoption. Are there any questions before I call for a vote? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel, Ms. Hock?
I respectfully request board approval for the items listed under personnel.
Are there any questions for Ms. Hock? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Business and financial?
Thank you, Michael. I also respectfully request approval of the business, financial items, ten point one through ten point four.
Are there any questions? Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Committee on Special Education and Preschool Education, special education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Report by student representative.
So I started out the month by finally meeting some of the eighth graders at the middle school, who were able to provide me with some really helpful information on what they felt they needed to feel prepared for the start of high school, what they and their classmates are excited and nervous about, and what worked for them on the high school tour and what didn't. So I plan on bringing what I learned from them to high school administration sometime this month. I was then able to meet with Central Valley students, which was exciting, because that's the only school that I hadn't visited before, and I was extremely impressed with how involved and well-spoken all the students that I met with were. Two of the girls I talked to had founded the diversity and youth club at the school, and told me about some of the announcements they had made to their school during Black History Month. Representatives from the Central Valley Student Council talked about how they helped administration with the school's reward system incentive, and one representative from Study Buddies talked about how fifth graders helped second graders who were struggling with math and reading. So the main takeaway that I got was, again, just how involved each student was. There were kids from computer club, STEM club, chorus and drama club, and all the fifth graders that I talked to there were very excited to start middle school soon as well. I also met with Pine Tree students right after spring break, and they were all very excited to be back in school and eager to tell me what they had done the previous week. And then over spring break, I was lucky to have the opportunity to go to Canada with about twenty-five other French students. We were really immersed in the language, and we learned so much about Quebec culture and traditions, and I'm grateful to have such an amazing opportunity in the high school. And the French National Honor Society and other language honor societies have been practicing for their induction ceremonies, and I know everyone's excited to be inducted after all the hard work they put into their language classes. And then today, the Youth and Government Club that I run at this high school invited the Orange County Board of Elections to come to our school and help high school students register and preregister to vote during their lunch periods. We were also able to get high school students who are going out of state for college absentee ballots, so they can still vote in New York elections, no matter where they are in the country. And it's hard to believe that some classes are starting finals next week, and we're starting to prepare for AP classes, so spring break was fun, and now students have a busy next few weeks ahead of them.
Excellent, thank you. Reports by Board of Education committees, first up, visitation?
We have not met in a while. Our next meeting is April twenty-six, four-thirty, at the Cragville Road School, if anybody's interested in joining us. We'll report on that sometime in May.
Thank you. Policy?
Yeah, we will be meeting tomorrow morning at eight AM, right here at the Ed Center.
Excellent. Thank you. Audit committee, I had provided the update at the last meeting. There's been no further updates or changes since then. Student representative, search?
So we will be meeting soon. We have our applicants now in. We have nine applicants that we have to go through, so we will be talking and connecting on when the best time it is for us to go through the process of choosing our representative to, unfortunately, replace Jenna. That'll be happening in the near term.
Thank you. Reports by board.
Jenna, I just want to thank you for your enthusiasm and commitment that you bring to the position. It's really great to hear your report every meeting, so thank you for that. And to the speakers, the students that spoke, I attended Les Mis, and it was a phenomenal performance by the students. Thank you for speaking to us, and to the superintendent, and everybody that helped prepare the budget. It was extremely, you know, well shown and explained. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to thank the students for speaking up and bringing their needs to the board. This is important. And I wanted to finally celebrate the great weather outside. Spring is here, and good luck to students on their final exams, and thank you very much for the presentation. This was very informative, and probably, most likely, was very difficult to put together, but you guys did a great job. Thank you.
I hope everyone had a wonderful spring break, and came back all rested and ready to forge ahead with all those exams that are coming up. I'd also like to thank the students who came forward to discuss their needs, and I'd also like to thank everyone involved in the budget presentation. It was very well put together and very well explained, and thank you for all the work all of you do to make that possible. And have a lovely evening, and enjoy this beautiful weather.
Have a great night, and a safe ride home.
Thank you for the budget presentations, and to the speakers that got up and spoke tonight. We appreciate the comments, and I thought they all spoke really well, so I think that's definitely a positive, that for our students, that they have the opportunity to get up here and speak. And I wish everybody a great night.
Have a good night.
And thanks for the informative budget presentation. Thanks to our speakers. Enjoy the weather, have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out on a beautiful day. Luckily, you get out a little bit earlier than probably used to, so have a good night, get home safe.
This Friday is the Monroevit Autism Awareness Day, so help out with the lighter blue, and wear red, blue, or yellow to support it.
Any color.
Or any color.
I do would like to commend our students who are here tonight, who advocated for themselves and their programs, and it's always nice to see when you get actively involved and voice your opinions. Thank you.
And good luck, in addition to our Autissey the Mind teams that are competing in the state tournament this weekend. It's, secondly, it's great to have the Harlem Wizards back in town for our first time since the pandemic. For the staff, you know, we get as many staff out there, I'm, I'm feeling good about this year. I feel like this is like, this is like, this is going to be our year.
I love that you say that every time.
I feel like this is, this is our year.
It is.
We, the high schools hold, hosting a job fair on April twenty-seventh. In the evening, we have a variety of local businesses that are looking for employment. We're also going to have a team there from the guidance department to allow students to get their working papers. So certainly, we encourage anybody to, you know, who's looking for employment to come out. And also, we're, we're looking for local businesses that might be interested in participating in the job fair, that might be looking to employ some of our students. Thank you.
I, I've got nothing. Thank you very much. Have a, have a nice night, everyone.
So I'd just like to thank everyone who was involved in the budget development process, so we've, we've gotten through that point tonight, and sort of the public relations aspect starts soon. You know, it's, it's always a team effort. Everyone pitched in, and we, and we got it done. So have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Have a good night.
I just want to remind everyone to please go out and vote on May sixteenth. Oftentimes, when people see a presentation like tonight, they're going to be like, well, we're not, we don't need to go out and vote. No, you do, and it's your civic responsibility to go out and vote. So I implore everyone to please, please go out and vote. Secondly, yes, Dr. Vias, it is Autism Awareness Day, but you don't have to wear blue, you can wear any color. I think the theme is light it up with kindness. You can wear blue, red, yellow, any color, as long as you support autistic voices. And so it's really important to remember that on, on, on this Friday. I also want to say to the students who got up and spoke, it's really hard to get up there and speak. It was hard for me to get all the numbers right, did you see that? So it's, it's not easy. So it is admirable that you got up and advocated for yourselves, and I think that that's something that I'm very proud of. Keep doing it. It's your right, and it's important that when you don't think something is right, or you are concerned about something, or you want something, that you use the proper venues, which is use the microphone, speak. And again, I'm, I'm really proud of the fact that I, we had three students get up and, and speak and advocate for themselves. It's not easy. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a great week. I was about to say, have a great spring break, but we just got back from it, so I hope you had a great spring break. No.
Yeah, second one's not in your contract.
No, it's not.
Your boss.
I want to thank everyone for the budget process. I know budgets, I have to do them every year as well. I know the level of work, effort that goes into them, so I truly do appreciate the level of work that went in, and the presentations, and the information, the charts, it was all really well-done, well-placed, and I think it made it clear, so we were able to move